Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call me each order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrant. The first would use my friend. It's nice to see you. Me, sir.
Good Lord, we thank you so much for this day that you created for us. And thanks for the blessings we're receiving from. But, uh, we as a council, each person here on this council is elected to work for the betterment of the city. And we give it patience and wisdom and knowledge to be able to make decisions to move the city down the forward and to assist like them in our decisions. Lord just lead us and guide us in all that you have to do each day. I pray this prayer now. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of August 19, 2019 needed. Everybody had time to review. But, oh, I got kind of just not told me that, didn't you? See what I do? I could read. August 10th. Didn't have a one before that. All right, I get corrected. A approval of the minutes of August 5th and henceforth.
Awesome. Your name is, is it the?
The city. It must be.
I think there's anything else, not that this day would.
Under vestiges, they're just spelling their slow as none should be slow. The other title is nothing.
Which one is it?
Uh, under vestiges of knowledge. It's just something could be done too slow. It's got low.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. No. Second. Please. All papers out. All right. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. Early open meetings will may deliver a presentation under this agenda. I have all presentations are subject to a five-minute timeline. The one present wish to speak the seat. It's not on the agenda. Everybody, gentlemen, and us, the same thing. Thank you, thank you. All right. City council may consider, discuss, and act upon approving and following the election on November 5th, 2019 to elect persons to the office of mayor, city council member District One and District Two. We have a motion to approve that order. Call him through the general election. Move him to the fifth. Second.
Second.
All papers out.
I have it here, didn't I fill it out?
What?
Yeah. Who has this one?
Oh, yeah. All right. So you can't say it on the way. And then, I don't know if you've ever heard of the president. City council may discuss upon the ordinance, calling a special election to be held on November 5th, 2019 for the purpose of amending the city's home rule charter. You should have the new copy.
Yes. I passed out the election ordinance and, um, just going to kind of walk me through it. And, uh, there's just some slight changes on number one. Amendment number one, on page three, if those want. The latest stuff, we've got the particulars of the ordinance where we're going to have twelve in place up with Shannon, what's her name, Smith? Ken Smith, and got all the information from her. And then we, uh, got it here, the amendments, which is discussing. And then if you pass the amendment, that's what the change will look like. And then at the very back, we have the propositions as of here on the top. Uh, and so just here at number one, what I have done is, is that is, if you remember, we had in there the basically, uh, change throughout the gender, things like that. I just took that out and we were just making changes to the city administrator, city manager. That was what we were primarily talking about. So I went for that number one. We're making all our change. If you give it passes, basically throughout the charter, we read city manager, so it's the administrator. Uh, we're at in the charter, it's about the city. And the city council in any spots, it'll always be city council coming on. And then when it talks about commissioner, it'll be city council member. And so that way we'll have the same changes throughout it. Um, the only other changes were on, um, number amendment number. Amendment number seven, and that's on page 12. And basically I made three of the ballot propositions contention upon if the voters pass proposition three, which is our big proposition, which basically goes to council manager form of government. And so number seven basically talks about the city secretary employment. So if we pass the, uh, the main number three, then they'll get to vote on that. And the same thing for, I don't know, the 11 and number 12. No, I'm sorry, number 10 and number 11. And both of those deal with, number 10 is the same way, if they pass, if you get the voter pass, the council manager form of government. And then basically it will provide, so also get to vote on the council not interfering and appointing the city manager, which deals with council not directing employees of the city, you know, where she goes through the city. And so that way, what I'm trying to do is to give the voters as much chance to vote down or up on all the propositions. The other one under three are all tied together and they all are referenced in there, so we had to have them under one proposition. And so I tried to make it as many alternatives. But those, that one in the very last, to the 23, which was kind of our renumbering, I also said that by ordinance, what this will allow us to do as a council is to renumber and rearrange the charter once it's approved, it can change it approved. And correct non-substituted errors. So if we have spelling errors and things like that, you'll have the ability to correct that in the spelling, punctuation, spelling, spacing, inventing grammar, so we can just mess with the format of it, but not the content of it. And so that just gives us as much of the deal with the actual way of, um, there may be some couple of number changes if these pass. So that's, we'll have the authority to do that. So other than that, it's exactly what we talked about before. Uh, like I said, the, um, if you have the place approved today, today is our best day to call the election. Um, we're going to be posting directly, it's translated in Spanish, and get both of them posted, and I'll help the need at the time, actually, we'll get those posted during your possibility of development. Any questions?
Yes.
Come on.
Mr. President, the city administrator, that means the city manager?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't change the word, change that word?
In the ballot propositions.
Oh.
What I said in the ballot number one, what it will say is, the word if I did it in the ballot propositions and they don't pass, then we'll, by, in the summer pass, have city manager in the night. So what proposition one says is that, uh, shall the city administrator amend the city charter concluding all amendments included by the voter, be managed permission to city council, all references commissioner of the city council, and commissioner of the city council members.
Okay.
So in other words, basically, if this passed, if one passes, we'll change every word in every patch. It does not appear on the march on commissioner, city council members, all of them are changed down. Um, so just for simplicity, I'll let it down, so we have city manager, have city administrator. That's the simplest one.
All right. Motion approved and ordered, calling a special number of seven amendment in the city's home rule charter. Second. All papers out. All right. City council may consider, discuss and authorize action to approve the West Texas Council of Governments, our Central Texas Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
What this is, uh, the state managers of state are so often driven by FEMA, and if we don't see it updated, I believe that counts against you if you ever need FEMA dollars. So, uh, this is just FEMA-driven, uh, are driven by FEMA, which is federal agency to the state, and the state gave us the college. And, uh, they, we've done the, they obtained the, our firemen have been involved, our police have been involved, and it's just basically, they've approved it and they need our approval on it. So it's, I think this, uh, about sixteen months ago, uh, we revised it. It's taken us long to get to us to go through it. They've approved it, now they just need us to approve it. Or had a resolution based on it. I think basically it's just if, if something were to happen, train derailment, tornado, hurricane, you know, uh, that we'd have people in place to tackle these issues if they were to come along. And we do.
Any questions? All right. Motion to authorize action to approve the West Texas Council of Governments, our Central Texas Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
What this is, uh, the state managers of state are so often driven by FEMA, and if we don't see it updated, I believe that counts against you if you ever need FEMA dollars. So, uh, this is just FEMA-driven, uh, are driven by FEMA, which is federal agency to the state, and the state gave us the college. And, uh, they, we've done the, they obtained the, our firemen have been involved, our police have been involved, and it's just basically, they've approved it and they need our approval on it. So it's, I think this, uh, about sixteen months ago, uh, we revised it. It's taken us long to get to us to go through it. They've approved it, now they just need us to approve it. Or had a resolution based on it. I think basically it's just if something were to happen, train derailment, tornado, you know, uh, that we'd have people in place to tackle these issues if they were to come along. And we do.
Any questions? All right. Motion to authorize action to approve the West Texas Council of Governments, our Central Texas Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Any more?
Second. All papers out. All right. City council may consider, discuss and authorize action to award an application preparation administration contract, Public Management Inc., for 2019 Downtown Revaluation Program Grant.
Uh, this is the grant that we had, uh, talked about a couple of weeks ago. We would like to, the opportunity to apply for this grant. Uh, but in order to apply for it, we had to find a grant administrator and an engineer. Now, if we approved this tonight, that's not saying we're going to go for the grant. It's not saying that we're not, you know, it's just giving us the opportunity to go after it with the grant.
Right.
Uh, we asked, we went out for bids. Uh, public management was chosen, uh, they're here tonight. Uh, we also went out to bid on the engineer, and SKG was the engineer that was chosen for that as well, for, for the project as well.
Any trouble?
Uh, we, uh, so, public management, this is number eight, this is just for public management for the, uh, grant writer. So, uh, do y'all have any questions on this?
Do you want me to go ahead?
Not yet. There won't be any, I'm probably on the grant writer.
Yeah, I'm engineering.
Uh, yeah, move forward with it. Unless we choose to move forward.
We'll get your votes in.
Right, right. This is just, if we do, we already have the grant writer in place, so, uh, and there's no money unless you're awarded the grant. And then I think it's thirty thousand, they're, they're, if we choose to go for it with anything on this revaluation.
I'm going with the grant, I mean, we're looking.
I can get to two hundred seventy-five thousand, so, yeah. Maybe even more.
Yeah, uh, so, so a couple of comments. Well, I'm Jack and Kevin. Uh, as Tommy said, this is going to come back before the council in a couple of weeks. In a couple of weeks, there'll be a formal resolution that council will have to vote on whether or not to submit an application to this program, okay? Until council takes, uh, not, as Tommy said, is allow myself as, uh, application preparer, working with an awarded, uh, engineering firm and staff to scope out the project application for this and present that to y'all here in a couple of weeks. The maximum grant award is three hundred fifty, five grand for that. That full amount, that's the maximum. Uh, whatever the city does apply for, it's strongly recommended for scoring basis to have a twenty percent match. And so if you do three fifty, then it's seventy thousand dollar grant. This is a two-year grant, uh, which I, the words being handed out early spring of, of 2020, then it'll be two years from that to complete the, uh, construction of this project.
And y'all would not be paying less?
Yes, that, that are, uh, we, we have a zero dollar application preparation scope, and RFT would only begin being invoiced if and when the city was awarded that contract. RFT is anticipated to be built into the grant funded portion of the budget. Because of peculiarity with this program, the engineering, uh, most likely will be budgeted from the required match portion of this grant, which is weird, but, uh, engineering for this program can only be paid with that required match amount. Again, that twenty percent of there to the city's cost.
Please, now.
Most engineers do not. Uh, I have not spoken to SKG. Tommy may have, uh, some information about that. Most engineers, though, for the application preparation, all we're talking about is meeting, phone call with staff, hey, what do y'all want to do? All right. Here's, uh, opinion of the code. And that's effectively it for, for engineering in the application. Most engineers don't charge for that.
Any questions?
How much we, you would just pay the fine for that total?
Honestly, we'd have to go low. Yeah, I mean, it could be twenty thousand dollars. I mean, a lot, a lot depends on our budget. And then what actually needs to happen, what the, what the neighbors want, and stuff like that. So, I mean, well, it's, it's basically for cycles.
I'm not really sure you don't love that.
No, no, just a bit.
And, and that match amount, since it has to primarily go to engineering services, that's a lot of funding cost, but for budgetary reasons, some cities do say, hey, you know, kind of, your time with design, so that way we can split up that required match over two budget cycles, if that's something that, that council's invested in.
But in two years, this is beginning in two years.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, but then that's why we really like to have him on board to help us through, because some of these grants, saying, you know, he's a guru on some of this, so, you know, help us figure out if we can go forward with this one, or, you know, if there's something better else out there.
No questions? All right. To award application preparation administration contract to Public Management Inc., 2019 Downtown Revaluation Program.
Second.
Second. All papers out. All right. City council may consider, discuss and authorize action to award an application preparation engineering services contract, SKG Engineering for the 2019 program.
Same situation.
Correct. I'm all recovered, all.
Yep. So, second. All papers out.
Thank y'all very much. I'll go out after tonight, tomorrow, get in touch with SKG, work with staff, and we'll start to scope it out. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. All right. Consider approval of building permits.
Six hundred two, Hammond, and six hundred five, we want to build a seven by two, uh, put stone problems there.
That's it? Ready?
Okay. This is going in the back or the front?
It's not going to somebody's front yard, is it?
It's add-on, so whatever that, whatever.
All right. Motion to set building permits presented, please. Second. All papers out.
She'll tell me. Sir, Beau wrote my agenda about Saturday night, evidently, he's got a lot of different agenda than I do. I have number eleven.
We're all over that, that we go well into the city manager.
And then I have the eleven.
And why are you saying that?
Because the agenda of the, of, because during the normal, our, right.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Well, the corrected one was not corrected.
So what have I have?
Do you have thirteen items or thirteen? You have, I'm assuming. It has number, you're number eleven.
So, but anything coming out of council should be approved of council, should it include the press release?
Doesn't have to be. Depends on what it says.
So you go, if I go back to December the second, last year, you require the council approval on Hunter Terney's press release.
And so.
For your considerations and approval at tomorrow's meeting, that's in December.
Yes.
So it's not mandatory then?
No.
But it kind of reflects, since he's a member of the council, a voting member of the council, opinion, but.
Well, if, if that opinion is wrong, then you might have an issue with it, but if you have to go, they issue press release, if you want to, this council renounce, here's why I pay off this. That's what he did. Uh, that's what his draft.
I just want to go out on, issue of this.
Well, there is, I'd say it's, I think there's good reasons for us to issue a press release. You don't have to, but.
As long as there's reasons, if you're pure and un.
Absolutely.
And, uh, the issue of what, you send them to the slate.
Well, for, for, you present the press release, say so. So who is that?
I figured that, but I think I go to Steve.
Yeah, that was my.
I never hear that.
I agree, but that's why it was on my agenda, it's not your agenda, it's not my agenda. So I didn't know I didn't have it corrected in.
I didn't, because we were told.
Well, I should, you're with from Sunday, not the other.
Oh, the time limit when you've been out. Uh, don't need to send one out, send a different one out. How many did you send out, one of you?
Two or three.
Which, in this person?
We corrected one without this number, your last, where's this one? So I got this here, you know.
So which one do you have?
The one number eleven, no?
You would?
No, no, you do.
Correct that, that's correct.
Right. So.
In the future, for the record, I would prefer that the whole council have it put on, but it was after, you know.
I don't disagree with you, because the one I have is up there.
Has that, has that press release been released on the, in the media?
Uh, I'll send it to the newspaper.
Really?
I do.
That's the way you.
I got my list.
It's our being.
They don't have to go through me regularly, they have to go through district local board. I get the scraps, it's all good.
He's the owner, he has like thirteen people.
Yeah, I got it, don't worry about it. We're all working too. So, uh, clear, clear? I have a lot of those, but, uh, so if that was, what was released, what was released? What was sent or what?
If you said the one that passed, it's me.
Okay.
Also.
Will Stan's a great guy.
Newspaper.
Okay.
You're going to grab your.
Took the one we had in November, December, right here, that, we got a few different things, the water's profound. And. Not here at that, but I think I go to Steve.
Yeah, that was my.
I've never heard of that.
I agree, but that's why it was on my agenda, it's not here, it's not my agenda.
Yeah.
So, I didn't know I didn't have those corrected in.
I didn't, because we were told.
Well, I should, you're with from Sunday, not the other.
Oh, the timeline of when you've been out. Don't need to send one out, send a different one out. How many did you send out, Tony?
Two or three.
Which, in this person, the correct one without this number, you're eleven, where's this one? So, I got this here.
So, which one do you have?
The one number eleven, no?
No, no, you do.
Right, that's correct. Right. So.
In the future, for the record, I prefer that the whole council have it put on.
I prefer that.
But it was after, you know.
I don't disagree, because the one I have is up.
Has that, has that press release been released to the media?
Uh, I'll send it to the newspaper.
Really?
I do.
That's the way you.
I got my list.
It's our main.
They don't have to go through me regularly, they have to go through district local board. I get the scraps, it's all good.
He's the owner, he has like thirteen people.
Yeah, I got it, don't worry about it. We're all working too. So, uh, clear, clear? I have a lot of those, but, uh, so if that was, what was released, what was sent or what?
If you send the one.
Passment.
Okay.
Well, Stan's a great guy.
Newspaper.
Okay.
You can grab your.
Took the one we had in November, December, right here, there, we got a few different things, the water's profound, and made it for the same.
Of course, I think some other people found different names, possibly. Why aren't you there?
I want to.
I said, I think the standard times may have found differently. I don't know what research mechanism they use, but that's just what I heard.
What, what did they find, what are you talking, what are you talking about?
Maybe fifty thousand or sixty thousand dollars, I guess it's pocket change to you, but it's not the.
I'm trying to understand what you're talking about.
I know you're, that's why I'm not going to repeat it.
Okay, it's on the dinner, but it was busted, it's been taken care of, we're going to move on. Is that okay?
All right. I just got two things to talk about, and they're both.
All right, get a Steve answering his bi-week report, please.
Uh, as we've been crunching numbers for a month now, a lot plus the street signs, uh, for Chris, Steve, I think we have them all up that we've ordered, is that right? And we're, I think we're still scrounging around with bits and pieces for hardware, uh, but everything we've got is up.
Coming down.
And I think there was, I remember that in the, over, that, um, there was twenty-five, I believe, signs, um, let's see, because they were cross sections, so fifty, fifty signs. Steve, you remember how many you cut?
Less than a hundred?
Twelve.
Yeah. It's somewhere between fifteen and seventy-five.
All right.
Okay.
I theoretically remember.
Now, the thing I didn't notice, if you go down.
So, things are installed, are installed?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Uh, some of the poles that, with some hardware, there's poles across the street, there's some hardware, so you may have a, a street sign, one going this way and one going that way at the intersection. We're slowly working and trying to correct some of that.
Okay.
But, uh, but.
Are there for, for guidance for nine one and?
Right.
In the.
Right.
How come across the street sign, is that concerning to you?
I, I didn't.
When you're high school.
Um, but Steve will, will be working with, uh, getting, we gotta put in a number for some new signs, and, um, so putting in a twenty to fifty, you know, a month or something like that, that's kind of what we're shooting for.
Surely we've got a count.
Uh, I'll say program two fifty, two fifty.
Okay, well, we've been a good dent, that's, that's exciting. And then mostly found, founder?
There's a lot of, there's, there's, I'd say they're probably mostly on the side of what you, that, that we need to get.
Oh, the immediate.
Yeah, the ones that are already on, on itself.
Okay. Good deal.
You can roam around there and you'll see.
I don't know, first of all, we're going to be in new signs.
Yeah.
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 See how reflective they are, haven't they?
They are. Wow.
They're contrasty, though.
Yes, they're contrasty, but not reflective. Those, those were very expensive.
They're going to be different.
And that's what I was thinking, so. All right, uh, the next thing I was going to stop about is code enforcement. Uh, there's been, there's been lots of code enforcement issues that have come up recently, and, uh, we haven't been able to really tackle efficiently, and some of it is because our, our code enforcement person works nights on rotation, you know, they work weeks and days and a week day. And, uh, and then, uh, Steve has also been on public works, uh, he works in public works as well as code enforcement, and we've been kind of trying to tackle these problems on the, on the police, typically it's for, you know, weeds and dirt with houses and cars, and then also on the, on the city side, was writing letters and condemning houses that need to be condemned, letting people know they need to cut the yard, the grass, they got X amount of days. And, um, some of the things too that are, uh, one of the big things we were going to try and do after we got through with the charter is really go through our ordinances and, and kind of give them, strengthen them a little bit, and some of them are a little weak, uh, for the house.
Well, that's where you've been on the.
Well, it's been the last three or four years.
And it is recent per se, but, um, I, I, he, he, he's just making sure that what we have in this place is law.
It's a little bit.
Right, I mean, he isn't really, he, right.
Making sure it's not.
We talked about application, they're just taking them from the sort of.
Right.
It wasn't a, a whole issue that should put on.
Now, what we said, you know, there's something clearly valid, it's there all along. So.
Right, right.
Anything that's duplicated or altering, say, one says, well, kind of.
Right, I think we, we, we.
We kind of stalled out on it because the charter was, was taken a lot of time. Uh, I mean, not in a bad way, it was just, it's, it's a major problem.
There's just one path.
Our next step, we need to charter through everything, is we gotta go through and look at our ordinances really hard and, and see what we can do about, define things that, that make it easier for our police department, our code enforcement officer to actually state to, you know, uh, you know, if you have a car sitting over X amount of days or it's been run or it's not registered or something like that, I mean, and that may be in the ordinance right now, I don't know, it might be. Uh, but there are things that we need to, to stiffen up. For instance, the house on Eighth Street, you know, uh, where we've gone, I mean, sixty days, days, uh, we've come into municipal board, let them deal with it, uh, I mean, that's kind of the route we need to go with it. And, uh, but it would help if we had a stronger ordinance to, to sit on. Now, I mean, they're clearly at this point, they didn't, you know, set back, but if you had something a little clearer, like you cannot actually have a portable building in your front door period, you know, that would help a lot. So, it's little things like that that, that we'll need to review our ordinance and see if we can, you know, uh, maybe hold some areas and, uh, just make sure it's, it's better than what it is. Uh, but anyway, I was kind of, let Steve answer any questions or anything.
Well, we stay out on the question, was probably, I don't know, I'm a total number of the, it's just in the call, I get from people or contacts, I get from people, R four, trash, weeds, houses and so forth. So, I want to make sure that we're, our code enforcement does actually do a good work.
Right.
I mean.
And then at three o'clock, I think, when we say night shift, he goes on at three, so there's some daylight left, but, you know, it's evening.
For them, like a little.
Yeah, and there.
Well, I mean.
And there's not much overlap for him and Steve to work together.
Yeah, we, we, uh, if we have something come up, if somebody calls something in, we institute that into our work order system, is that right?
Okay, so. I've just been going, doing myself on my little contact thing. I've been seeing a lot of people, you know.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of what I've been doing, I can call you in a little bit.
Yeah.
But all the pressure, most people says, we need to be, be called over this place.
Right.
I want to do it.
Right.
That's why they're going.
Right, um, that's, you know, we need that information.
But we're gonna, are you doing?
Or are we, the, the bigger question I have is, are we just relying on somebody calling?
That's what I'm trying to say.
That's what I kind of want to know, I want to know, the government retreats.
Don't drag over ten potholes to get to one.
React to people.
Yeah, and I can't leave you.
Or would you proactive?
Right.
Yeah. Are we able to be proactive?
Yes, we are. I mean, honestly, every city employee should be on the lookout for different things. If you see a couch on the side of the road, you should be able to handle it, somebody know.
Right.
So, every, yeah, uh, right, so, uh, you know, every employee should be able to, same as being.
Have they been made aware that, that they see something?
Yes.
Here's some general.
And we've talked to our, our, our trash guy.
Codes.
And, and ask him to, because he sees it all in the house.
Right.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, just make a note, let, let us know, and we'll, you know, we'll pick it up, you know, there may be a mattress, a couch or.
Like I said, so, uh, wrong places up there in my neighborhood, tree limbs, they get back, and weeds or people fall through the tree limbs.
Yes.
Living there a long time.
Well, yeah, and, and I know they have to call those in, but.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. You know, the thing is, sometimes, especially with tree limbs, we had, call me in, it's your work order first, before we just stop on such.
But if they're driving to a work order, they see this.
Well, what, what happened, what happened there was, he used to do that.
Yeah.
And then he picked up someone for them, they called, they want.
Yeah.
They want them back.
Yeah.
In particular.
I definitely was, well, and this didn't, this didn't a nice way, the problem, it happens once in a while, I imagine.
Uh, that's true, you know, I mean, as you drive, as soon as you see the fourteen foot pothole, you gotta listen up.
Yeah.
Or can we notify those people that have the tree limbs sitting out there for an extended amount of time, can we, or something on the door that says, hey, you need to call to have these picked up if it's trash?
It'd be a little driver.
But if he says, they may pick up some on firewood, so there's the problem.
I understand.
No, I don't recommend that.
No, I understand, but I mean, if you're going to stack stuff outside of the road.
With the trash.
You know, I think, this is harder.
That's disgusting. Y'all have the other. I was worried that, just to make sure we're not going for better looking. I mean, the weeds, everybody talks about some of them, all right. Let me get, that's not a, that's a problem.
Yes.
I'm sure for us on a six feet hill. Okay, I'm going with it. Thanks, sir.
All right, here request for future agenda items from city council, we have anything on the agenda, please.
I believe you've, uh, did it to, I mean, your review started on Tommy, so we kind of lined up the budget. And what's going to be a little late to, be like every, because it's not only just years, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
This one, Larry, there's a, I thought you were like eleven months.
When do we have to approve the budget? Is our timeline.
Can we file the budget with the council? We have to file the budget before the twenty nine.
On thirty.
We have to city check their office, and then we have thirty days, wait, wait for it, it's a, I'm waiting for twenty nine, otherwise we'll have like twenty nine set up. So, just go ahead, you've got to revise it by now and file it, get it, first, first standard, and then you keep working on it.
Okay.
That way you start to get, thirty days after it's filed to adopt the tax rate on that, so we still, we have it also, they're filing.
Except when we adopt it tonight.
Because you have to wait thirty days after.
Or can we not, because it's not on the.
Well, Tommy can file a budget.
I mean, file it, that's.
Yeah, file a budget, no. About it, then.
Just file it, probably file it tonight.
And that way, then you work on it, whether it's a public hearing, you send it, you have a public hearing, and all of it, of course, that's, yeah, so it's, but you also work on five ten.
That's all, I'm, 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 I'm,
Yeah, just be simple, please.
Yeah.
Okay.
What about, we want to have the other departments do theirs as well?
I think we can do that, but that's going to be, I would depend on how the charter vote goes and have departments doing year reviews and...
I will, maybe by September, because New Year starts in October, the next week, so...
That's something I'd like to see.
But then that's going to be, so when we come up for budget? Is that, are all the reviews going to be in before budget's deemed out?
Next year, probably.
They're done in September.
They're going to do that target before budget.
Well, no, if, okay, if you, if you go through the form with your people, set goals and stuff like that for the year, okay, then you've evaluation, you know...
Typically, you do a mid-year, kind of a track deal, and then you do a final review in the year.
Right. And that way we're ready for next year and ready for next year's budget.
Yes, it's a little bit...
That's all, Ed. That's it? Anything else? Good. All right, we're going to take the 10-minute break before we start on the work trip for the budget. It's not directly a part of an agenda item, but as fast as we can, go ahead and review it. So, we're not going to adjourn at the moment, but we will start the workshop, a 10-minute...
What is supposed to be on the agenda?
It's just not...
You believe it, so? You believe that we... Okay.
Yeah.
I was never, we've done that over here. That's a good tension here. I'm going to put them in my design, have that water squirt circle in there.
Yeah.
Always like cracking them in front, just get that wind caught in there.
Yeah.